I want to take just a minute before we get started. You know, as of 2020 in the census, Millard County had 12,963 residents. I don't count 12,963 people in this auditorium, or even half that, because we'll be duplicating this debate tomorrow in Fillmore. But what I am noting is that you are the people that showed up. And so while the candidates going forward tonight have an obligation to try and answer some questions, some of them tough, some of them easy, but none of them on issues that are easy. Local governance is a particularly difficult task. I've had many electoral debates with members of the state house and the legislature, the senate, as to who has a harder time, a county leader or a state legislator dealing and executing their duties. The answer I always get back from the municipal leader is the fact that the legislature passes rules and the candidates have to figure out how to pay for it. This is not personal dig.
That's true.
So, but your responsibility going forward from this is to conscientiously listen to what's discussed tonight and take the things that the candidates are saying and try to apply them to the future. One of the questions that will come up in this debate are based on the past, but they don't really apply to the future. So we're going to ask you to put on your thinking caps to try and figure out how these candidates will lead forward. And so I just, I ask for your complete attention, even though I will be highly flawed in my role as a moderator. So, we will start, whoops. We will start with the wagies. And we will set this up. If we could just move this microphone over here. And we'll have you come up here.
Yeah, so Evelyn and Vicki, you got to go first.
We got it. Okay. Okay. So, you got the disadvantage seat because yours rotates back and forth, which means that if you have to think about something, the audience is automatically trying to think you were nervous. When we were doing the County Seat TV show, I actually taped those chairs together on our set so that my guests weren't going like this all the time on the program. So, just to know. I'm going to, I'm going to... Where's your penny?
It's there.
You have it?
I have it.
All right, we're going to determine who goes first. And you're closest, so you call it.
Tails.
Tails for first. Whoop. It's tails. You get to go first. I never could do that in grade school, and guess what? I still can. Okay. So, if you would like to introduce yourself as Lyman and let people know who you are, and we're going to give each of you five minutes for an opening statement, and then we'll go into some questions about topics.
Okay. Sorry. Before I begin, I need to tell you that I just had some dental work done on my front teeth. And I'm still trying to get used to it, so I kind of have a little list. So just bear with me. Anyway, I'm Vicki Lyman and born and raised here. And loved every minute of it. I went away to college and I also taught for a few years up at the Lorm High School. Other than that, I've been here the whole time. Growing up, I grew up farming with my dad and my brother. My sisters didn't really care for farming. I thought it was great. My brother was 10 years older than me, so I was kind of the designated helper when he got older and wanted to do his own farming. So, anyway, I have lots of ties to agriculture. I know how important the water situation is. And after helping with that, well, in high school, I loved sports. I loved math, science, and even art. So I kind of have a diverse background. I went away to college. I got a composite major in biology with minors in chemistry and physics and math. And the reason I'm telling you that is I want you to realize I'm not afraid to work hard. And I love learning and I love challenges. And being a county commissioner is a new challenge, I think, would be very interesting. I know there's lots to learn, and I'm willing to do that. And I have a very flexible work schedule. And so I can pretty much set what hours I want to work in so I can make it to whatever meetings I need to. My boss out there said that if I need to make calls or receive calls, I'm good to do that. I can work later, whatever I need to do. They are willing to work with me. Anyway, I taught school over 29 years. Most of that at Delta High School. I taught chemistry and physics. Enjoyed every minute of it. The students here are awesome. And it was fun getting to know them. And I still like to know what they're doing and they're doing great things. So, anyway, I'm proud to be a teacher from this area. I got an offer to go out to the power plant. I worked in the lab for a year and a half, and then I became a technical analyst. I oversee programs where I worked with hundreds of thousands of dollars in projects. And if I mess up, it's going to cost the plant millions of dollars. So I have a lot of responsibility out there. But I like the new challenge. And it is fun to get to know the people out there and learn a little bit about how industry works and how things run smoothly. I really had no interest in politics, but there were some things that happened in the county that I didn't really like what happened. And I'm sure we'll get some questions about it, these issues later, like the road farm, the tax increase, SB 2002, House Bill 393. There's some concerns I had there because either our commissioners didn't know some of the things that they needed to know, or they knew them, but they wouldn't say anything. Like senators wanted to know if anyone's were saying things that were incorrect. Our county commissioners did correct them. And that kind of bothered me too. So I decided, you know what? I'm going to get involved. And sometimes I think I either have a crazy or stupid gene in me, but I'm still going to do it anyway. Also, I still have to get back on Matt because he, they printed an article in the Chronicle today, and he kind of challenged my integrity. And anyway, you owe me one now. Because I am very honest and I will do what's right for Millard County. I am not representing the power plant. I am representing Millard County. And I will do what's right for Millard County. That's what I care about. I want the future to be right for our kids, our grandkids, and everybody. And I love our rural values and I want to keep those and I want to protect them. But I know we also need to increase and grow with industry and other big jobs. Anyway, appreciate your hope sometime.
So I'm Evelyn Mornick, and I grew up somewhat the same as Vicki did. I grew up as a seventh child in Sutherland, a farm girl, and I could cut 40 acres with the best of them. So I winded in all that. My grandpa would come and give me lunch, and I'd say, oh, you just got here just in time. I'm done. So, anyway, so I really loved growing up on the farm as well. So a couple of things I want you to know is that I am committed to the position of commissioner with my 100% time. I am committed to being a full-time commissioner, and I don't have another employer. Right now, I can tell you that on average, I spend 35 to 40 hours a week. And I'm personally over 17 departments and boards besides other commission duties that we share as commissioners. I have, I have not and will not ever do anything to jeopardize the water in Millard County. I want you to know that. I have worked over three years trying to learn this job, and it's been different than I thought. I felt like I had maybe a pulse on it. I had no clue. Anyway, I feel like just because I have these experiences and wanting to go forward with the plans that we've been making. We've had, you know, we know that the construction's coming. We've been making plans. I'm actually over tourism, and we have a great tourism director, actually, two of them. And we've been working with them with the tourism so that we can handle crowds. We're trying to make plans to be productive when we have people here. We want to bring them out on the desert, let them see what we have to offer. Other things that we have, I also want to be productive and engaged to promote and assist our economic growth. We have a great energy corridor out here, and we've got some great things that are happening. I need to take a drink of water too. I'm not able to do that. Can't talk without a little bit of that. So we all need water, right? In the county and everywhere else. In the state, we need water. Anyway, I want you to know that I continue to support the farmers too and existing businesses as we build our energy corridor out there. I believe that everything needs to be kind of in the right place. And so we need to have the good planning and zoning that we have, that we're actively participating in. We have a great board that helps us out. They do a lot of research, and then they come to us. And we ask what their vote was, and then we move on with, you know, what we think, if that was correct or not. So we have to make those decisions. I'm here and running for commissioner because I care about everyone here. We were talking about, I know that Vicki was just talking about some of the senate bills, 2002 and 393, which was the water, and also Senate Bill 20. And those were good bills for Millard County. I want you to know that I believed, I actually asked our attorney before I gave support on those bills, will this hurt the gas plant? And I want you to know, I asked him that because I was concerned myself. And he said, Evelyn, this will not stop the gas plant. It is still going to move forward. This has nothing to do with that. Senate Bill 2002 was eminent domain. It brought things back to the county, which was a blessing for us. Senate Bill 20 was the municipal exemption, which IPA has had. They've had that with them since the beginning. And it's something that's good for us to pull back on because they haven't used the 14% that they had. So, anyway, I want you to know that I care about you. I care about your families, and I care about our well-being here in the county. So that's why I'm running.
Thank you for the opening statements. I'm going to start with an unconventional question, but I think I'll be asking it to the other candidates as well. Vicki, I'm going to start with you on this one. And you may have alluded to it, but I want this to be the center focus of your answer. Why, on God's green earth, are you running for county commission? What is it that you think is important enough to take? Because you know how wicked of a job it is. Why are you doing this?
I think, and this is my opinion, and by the way, I think our county commissioners do want what's best for our county, but I think they aren't either doing their homework and finding out what they need to, or they just don't dare speak up. And I guess I have a personality where I just say, okay, I dare speak up. And I love learning, and I'm going to do the research I need, talk to the people I need to. I've talked to, well, actually more than five previous county commissioners, but I've asked five of them. I can get advice from them in the future because they've been there. And I know I still have to make the decision, but I want to get advice from them. And I've talked to them a lot. And I've got lots of good advice. And I think I'm ready to do it. And I, the power plant has said they're willing to work with me so that I can take the time I need, and it's not to represent them. I don't know how many of you know John Finlayson, but he cares about this community a lot. He provides service to the community all the time on IPP's time, like when there's a flood. He said, all right, anybody that needs to go, they'll take care of it. When there are wildfires, same thing. He tells people that they want to tutor kids in reading, set up the Zoom, and they can do it on IPP's time. And he wants what's best for the community. And sometimes I think some people try to make it look like IPA is out to get the community, and they're really not. I believe IPA needs to pay their fair share of taxes. I'm all for that. I mean, when my taxes go up over $1,000 this last year, it's like, yeah, I want somebody else paying those taxes, not me. And anyway, I just think that I have a conservative financial mind, and I think that I can look to the future and say, okay, these projects can wait until we start getting a bigger house space again. I think I can make good decisions.
Okay, very good. Now Evelyn, I'm going to slightly modify my question to you. Why on God's green earth, after doing this for four years, would you want to continue to be a county commissioner?
Yeah, that is a good twist. So I actually, the surprise when I felt the urge to do this in the first place, I felt like I've always been involved in the community in different ways. I have always volunteered. I was volunteered in PTA. I was on the Evanon State PTA Board. I mean, I just, things that I just didn't ever get paid for. And I didn't care because I just, I liked to work and I liked to work for the good of the people. Then I worked in the Chamber of Commerce and became the president there, and I just liked it. And I felt like I really loved Millard County. We moved away, basically, off and on for 15 years, and then we came back to raise our family when our kids were little. I knew that this was a good place to raise our kids, and it has been. It's improved to be the right place for us as a family. So back to, you know, why do I really want to run now again? Because we have been making plans for the future with the construction that's going on. We have things that I know need to happen. And it took me a while to learn this position, and I'm not ready to quit. I feel like, you know, what I have to offer is still something that will be helpful for Millard County going down the road. So that's why I wanted to do that. Just keep going.
Okay. I'm going to redirect the next question. I do want to practice this a little bit with a comment. I don't know how many of you realize how much county commissioners put in. And I'm not talking about your commissioners in Millard County. I'm talking about across the board. For a county commissioner to be effective, they have two conferences that are for three to four days long, twice a year, that are a must-do. There is a national association of county executives that have an annual fly-in to Washington. This is a must-do. Some counties don't have the budget for it, but when they can and they've got important issues, this becomes critical contact for county leaders. In addition to this, every Thursday of the legislature, county government officials, commissioners in particular, gather and discuss and monitor the week's activities that have gone on at the state legislature. It is not uncommon for us, because we've been covering them for more than a decade in our county seat program, for them to show up at the Capitol at 6:00 in the morning and stay there until the sun goes down, which isn't granted all that late in January and February. But it is, it is then on top of that that you add, you know, your association with government commitments. There are government land agency advisory boards. There are transportation boards with UDOT, and these positions all have to be filled. And these candidates have to be able, if they're going to represent the county well, to be at those meetings. So you're paying for a part-time position. Generally, you're getting at least a full-time job. And I just think it's important to say that so that people coming in and people already there and the population knows that it isn't just a matter of showing up to the county commission meeting adding a few people on your head, rubbing a few elbows, and getting it done. There are a lot of calculations that go into it. That being said, I now want to return to the fact that two years ago, I was asked by Matt to do the same function in a debate. How many of you were at this debate two years ago? I recognize some of your faces. Topics boil with the times ever change. The issue that had everybody hot and bothered and wanting answers were CAFOs. This year, it seems to be IPA. So that doesn't mean that any of the other issues are less important. So I would like to just take a couple of these primary issues and ask the candidates to address them and what they see as the relevant parts of the issues and what needs to be done. Because this will tell you a lot about where they intend to go. So I think one of the biggest issues, and Vicki did allude to this already, is the issue of centrally assessed taxes. This is one of the most troublesome things for county governments to deal with because any entity that has assets across county lines or has rolling stock, like power plants, like large CAFO operations, like power plants who sell electricity, they all are assessed not by the county assessor and not at the same tax rates that individuals in the county pay for. Those are all handled at a state level through the Utah State Tax Commission. And then if your county feels that they have unjustly been given exemptions because they all, I'm not going to pick on IPA. I will tell you that United Airlines does it, Union Pacific does it, you know, Rio Tinto does it. They all go in there and say, oh, you've overvalued our property. And they almost always automatically appeal. Counties are then faced with a choice because that's tax revenue that's due to operate your budgets. Those organizations have an impact on the county. And if the counties don't challenge those things, then you have to make up the difference because it's all going to wash at the end of the year. If you set a budget, you know, if you raise tax rates, your revenue still has to come out the same unless you go through a truth and taxation. If you lower tax rates, your revenue's still got to come out the same. And when you take a big chunk of revenue out, $700 billion, I believe, in aggregate, has come out of county coppers over the last few years on IPA. So that's my question that I wanted to start with. Is Vicki, how do you tackle centrally assessed? There's been some criticism of this county that they've spent nearly half a million dollars a year trying to handle an unsettled tax bill that dates for back to 2014. So I would like you to address, do you think those kinds of expenditures to continue to try and settle appeals that are worth $12 or $15 million is worthwhile expenditure? And then Evelyn and I will ask you to answer that same question. Please go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I know that it's been written in the paper and it was mentioned in Senate Bill 2002 that county had been spending nearly half a million each year on litigation. Okay, I think even our county commissioners, current ones, will admit that that is incorrect, but they have been spending money. And I agree with you. IPA and all those other industries, airlines, whatever, they're going to try to not pay taxes. They want to keep as much money as they can. But since it's centrally assessed, the state does that. And that's why one of the things in the paper today is that kind of made it sound like, how am I going to assess IPA when I work for IPP? It's like, I have nothing to do with the assessment. Okay, the state takes care of that, and the commissioners just say, okay, we're going to charge you this much in taxes. And then it's up to IPA if they want to agree or not. And I don't know why it's been since 2014 that they've had an agreement. I talked to Jim Withers, and he said that while he was in office, that he and the president of IPA at the time had reached an agreement where they, IPA would pay more taxes than they were supposed to during these many years while the value of IPP was depreciating and, or decreasing. And then, so they overpaid, and then to make up for it once they built the gas plant, then the county wouldn't charge them as much. And I think that's a great idea. I think it would have made it a lot easier on our taxes. But, and those two had agreed to it, and he told me that Dean Grafer said, no, we're not doing that. And so since that time, we've not had an agreement on the taxes. And, I mean, to me, there's an easy solution. Instead of wasting all this time, every year, time and money, let's just let the courts decide it. Okay? They're non-biased. Perfect solution. Let's get it done. Let's let the courts do it, have it over with. IPA will know where they stand. County will know where they stand. We don't have to fight about it anymore. And then once we know how each, the county's bills and how IPA bills and see who was kind of in the right, we'll kind of know how to go from there. But there's no reason to keep wasting all this time and not making any progress. I think it's time to just say, okay, courts take it over and let's get it done.
As best as I'm aware, just as a very quick follow-up for you, as best as I'm aware, there are several years outstanding, not just 2014. I think that's the only one that's actually gone to court, but several are still tied up in appeals process within the tax commission. So Evelyn, I'm going to let you address this issue because, well, just because you've been in it.
So actually, we haven't spent that much on the litigation through those years. And that, I know Matt made a change on that today. Actually, since 2010, we have spent 1.9 million on it. So that's not, you know, what we, what is being said there. So that is a change. But it still does take a lot to run a county. I want you to know that. The centrally assessed is a problem, how they do things because I know that the plan is worth more than when it even started, right? So, but they have a depreciation schedule, and so that's what, what happens when that, that goes on. In the beginning years, they paid 85% of our county tax base. And now they're at 30%, which does cost us, as citizens, a tax shift. So it puts the burdens back on our shoulders, right there. So that is a hard thing for us to do. I know that, one thing I wanted to say is I actually do do my homework all the time. I'm always talking to people and trying to find out how they feel and what they feel about things. So it makes a lot of difference, you know, when you know the pulse of the county and trying to work every day on something that, you know, I don't have to quit when, when, when I'm tired and, you know. And, you know, I can just keep going to try to find out from people how they feel and what they feel. And I just keep going with that, trying to talk to people. Let's see, I was going to say one other thing on the centrally assessed. We do need to fix it. And the way to force to do that is take up legislation and tell them that we need to have help fixing that so that we do get the proper tax base brought back into the county. And it's not just IPA. We have, I know that litigation included not just IPA, but 13 other centrally assessed properties of businesses.
I see Senator Victor's taking notes. Okay, I'm going to reverse the order on this next round of questions. And they're going to be fairly general and open. But I would like to address water. Water has become an issue that's been a very big, particularly for Millard County. You know, it's in the 10 years that we followed county government with our program, it was first Snake Valley. And then now it's become IPA. And still something that nobody's talking about is the Iron County run on water resources that are in the aquifers that are all linked together, not just Snake Valley, that will have an impact on parts of Millard County. There are lots of different ways to look at finding ways of preserving water or generating new sources of water. I would like to hear your thoughts on that.
So, you know, the water in Iron County, we actually have been actively engaged in that and have written a letter that we all signed as commissioners in opposition to them drilling in Iron County. Sorry, Senator, you know.
You remember this one, that's for every county.
So that, there you go. Thank you. So we do know that we have to keep our water, the water rights and trying to keep our aquifers full. The issue that we have as a county commissioner, and it's not an issue, but I don't really have anything to do with water. The canal company runs the water. We all know that we're in a drought. I heard it was 17 years. And I think Governor Cox told us last year it was 22 years. And I'm not sure how long the drought we've had. But, you know, that makes everybody thirsty. We all need water and we all want water. So it's something that we have to always try to protect. If I would ever be asked to support anyone, I would definitely do that. We watched that up at the state legislation in the last session. I know that there were four bills that were run. And I even think one was pulled. And I know that one had Sevier River in it. And not only did we ask, I know that the farmer asked, and I know that many others asked, you know, to have that removed, and it was removed. So it's something that we're always mindful of and we always watch over and know that we have to be diligent in watching over. So some of the themes, I know that going forward, you know, there probably is some good ways that we can try to find in water. But I don't know, got to do a rain dance, I guess, sometime. I don't know. It's one of those things that it's, water is a hard, hard thing to come by and it's precious and we need it here.
She's right. Water is, after the people in this area, water is the next best natural resource we have. And I know that the farmers in the area got really upset because Commissioner Graeford and Commissioner Warnock were speaking with a county commissioner from Sevier County. And the county commissioner said, well, now that IPP's not going to be using as much water, you guys support the idea of rebuilding the Hatch Town Dam? And according to what the water companies here have told me is that they said yes. And, well, at least one of them said yes. The other one didn't say no. So anyway, that got the farmers around here really upset because the extra water that IPP has that they do not use in their processes, they have always rendered out to the farmers. So farmers here have been grateful to get any bit of water they can and to make the county think, oh, yeah, we're going to let you take some of our water. It was really upsetting to the farmers, and I don't blame them. I mean, that's really, really important. And so since they got that idea started, House Bill 393 is studying the Sevier River and how the water's used. And time decided they're going to let that water still come down to us or if they're thinking that there's a better place that they can use it and let the people upstream get it. And so the farmers here are pretty upset about all of this. And anyway, the farmers have told me, the presidents of the different irrigation companies, that, you know, they're going to have to fight this and it's going to cost farmers money. And it's too bad it ever happened. As far as how we can get more water, I know that some of these agricultural wells are using a lot of water. That's why down in Iron County, the reason they need water is they are using it faster than the aquifer is being replenished. And in fact, one of the aquifers down there has collapsed. And once you collapse an aquifer, it's not going to fill up with water again. And that's sad that happened. And I know over in the flow well area, they are using water faster. Agricultural wells are using the water faster than it's being replenished in that aquifer. And so they are, the state is actually monitoring that. And I think with the way this drought is, that the state's going to have to probably monitor all the agricultural wells a little more closely. I know that all the wells actually have flow meters on them and that they're not supposed to go over a certain amount they have the water rights for. But I think it's probably going to have to be monitored a little more closely. And I guess those of us that like nice landscaping are probably going to have to consider doing a little more zero scapeing also. So anyway, those are my thoughts.
Is there anything I can say? Because there was a little misinformation on my end. I did never say anything about the Hatch Town Dam, ever. Wasn't included in that conversation. So.
But then.
I was at a six-county AOG meeting. And in the meeting, I was sitting over here. And that was not anything that we ever supported, so.
Well, according to the irrigation company boards, they met with you guys and supposedly you guys admitted talking to them.
I did not. I did not talk to them. And I did not tell them that either, so myself.
Well, they could be otherwise.
Okay. Well, that's misinformation because I did not support that at all. So just wanted to set that straight.
While we're on the focus of water resources, just to put redirect for me is, how supportive would the county be at making an attempt to create more reclamation? There's been talk in the state about revisiting whether reservoirs on stream systems is a good or bad idea. There's also been some conversation about trying to be a little bit more aggressive in forest and pinyon juniper management because any of those species can generate a lot of groundwater. A single pinyon juniper, given the right conditions, will drip a straw down into the aquifer and could take up to 200 gallons a day per tree. So that's a lot of water. Would you, as a county elected official, be more assertive in supporting some of those kinds of things, even though they're out of your purview? They will require efforts to get people's attention on them.
I always am supporting the things that are good, that would happen for the county, especially with water, if we could figure out how to save that. You know, and I agree that we, I know that by 2030, we will have secondary monitoring for the wells, you know, on all the water that we use. And we'll have to be watchful. I know that they're doing that up in Saratoga Springs right now. And they've cut their bills down by 20%. So, you know, there is something that's good about that. And, you know, it is going to cost us some money to get to that, too. So plans are being made. And I know that there's some grant money that can be applied for even right now, you know, to take care of that. How would I support trying to take care of water otherwise with reservoirs and everything? I think that we have possibilities. We do have some good systems. I wondered if we could, and I actually talked to, actually Brett Runfer, and he told me there was no way that, you know, we could bring the water down to the Sevier and save it here a little better than they can, you know, anywhere else. Because we're at the end of the water row. And I mean, water is important to us. So, you know, we all need to be saving. And I support anything that we could, and trying to begin to try to figure out how we can do that.
Vicky, your opportunity to address that redirect.
I would be all for trying to thin out the junipers and save water. But I think you'd have a hard time with environmentalists allowing that to happen. Also, as far as like the reservoirs go, she was talking about putting more water down here in the DMA-D. But that doesn't work because DMA-D is fairly shallow and it has lots of surface area that's going to allow for a lot of evaporation. So we're much better off just keeping the water up in the Sevier Bridge reservoir of the Yuba because it's a lot deeper and it has less surface area. So we don't get as much evaporation up there.
Good point. Okay, I would like to, I'm going to go back because first couple of questions you had first shot at. So this is going to go to Ellen to start. How much time do we have?
10 more minutes for your questions. Then we'll do one audience question. And then we need you to give the ladies a few minutes of clues.
Perfect. I probably am giving you my own indication. Most of you probably already know this. When we had these debates two years ago, CAFO operations and county ordinances and a state moved to take that zoning ordinance away from the county in a bill that was introduced out of Fox Eldred County, it was quite a stir. That bill did not come to pass. It left your county ordinances intact. But another set of maneuvers has created a situation where the county had to act on creating potential areas and making designations or lose control to the state as would have been in the previous go-round. And once again, see the state controlling how we set our ordinances for concentrated animal feeding operations. So I would like to have you address the situation. Hopefully, most people understand that Millard County was the only county that actually met the deadline of the original bill and got their operation or their designations made. Everybody else was relying on just sure they were talking into an extension. It's also interesting to note that that kind of evaporated after Millard County got their CAFO. Previously, they had already settled on Beaver. What's that? Beaver County already settled on Beaver. Ah, okay. So I would like to put CAFO to rest. And this is your chance to do it. And we'll move on from there.
Okay. So we'll just talk about that. That was, we addressed that the first year that I was in as a commissioner. And that took a lot of diligence to learn and find out what I really did believe in. I know that we had one CAFO that was trying to go out in the floodplain just outside of Keenley. And it was about 10 miles out there, not quite. And I knew it wasn't the right place. I knew that we, you know, needed to be diligent. I always was a proponent for an overlay map. And so that was one thing that I wanted to have happen. But I was only one commissioner and I couldn't ever get it done because I just had one vote. So then the state came in and told us that we had to have an overlay map. So that is when, you know, the planning and zoning worked together, our board, and they came up with a recommendation. And we liked the recommendation and it was a good spot. So that's what we did. We supported the recommendations from the planning and zoning for the CAFO and made our overlay map with that, so.
Do you think they will address issues in the future, Ellen?
I think that going forward, if people still have questions and still want to have CAFOs in the county, you know, they should come. And, you know, we work through that process. It doesn't tell everybody just no. It just says, this is where you can do it. This is where you can go. But, you know, we are, I'm always open to finding good answers for people that want to do things.
Okay, Vicky.
I actually agree with how they did the CAFO situation. Going back to water, I really have my concerns about how much water they possibly use. And I definitely am pro-agriculture, but I believe more in the family farm type operations. And I'm afraid, well, it seems that, it used to be that if you have the oldest water right, you have preference. And the newer water rights, if they had to shut them down, it would be the most recent ones that got shut down. But the state has changed that. And so now it's up to the state engineer to decide what's going to be shut down and what's still going to be allowed to pump water. And I feel that our farmers that we have here now need to be protected. And I don't want the state engineer saying, okay, we've got a CAFO here that's using this water. And I feel like maybe they're more important than your farm operations. So we're going to shut you down on how much water you have. So I do have the concerns with water. But I agree with what they did as far as where they set up the CAFOs.
Maybe you have time for one more question?
Yeah, we got one more question from the audience. Anybody else, right, got a question you haven't given me yet? Anybody else? A lot of the questions here, unfortunately, we can't ask all of them. We don't have enough time. You know, I think there's a couple that are just toward one individual candidate. I don't know if that's fair. Plus, some of these have been addressed that maybe we want to address again in the next discussion. I think this one's not a bad one for both candidates. Now, you have 10 minutes for a few minutes each. And then we go to their post.
Just give me your watch out, so it's fair.
I got it. I've got it.
Okay, Vicky, we'll let you take first shot at this one. And number two, how should the economic development plan be developed? How would you go about doing that?
First of all, I believe in public meetings. I think we need to get input from the public more than we have been doing. And I think most people in the county support growth. But we want to make sure it's the type of growth that brings in good jobs. And we can have a little bit of control on how much growth there is here. I think most of us likely live here because it's rural and it's a great place to raise kids. And so we do need to encourage that growth. And we need to vet these different companies and businesses that want to come in, industries, whatever, and make sure that they are what we really do want here. Because we do have limited water here and we need to be careful about not getting too much growth too fast. And I don't know if the county has considered a master plan yet. I think they've been working on it some. I know I've attended some city and town council meetings. And they are trying to come up with plans. And I think the county and the cities need to work better together because I've had different city councilmen's and mayors, et cetera, tell me that it's been really difficult to work with the county commission. And I think it's time that we work as a team because whatever's good for one town or city is good for the county. And so I think we need to get together and county commissioners work with the cities and towns to try to figure out what's in the best interest of all of the different communities.
No?
So I actually feel like we've made a lot of improvements working with the mayors. We actually have quarterly meetings now. During the COVID time, we weren't able to do that. But, you know, I feel like we always try to bring us together. I know we've done that since I've been in there because I've I know we've done that since I've been in there because I've made sure that those happen. So anyway, so the plan for the energy corridor is what I would like to talk about. We have an amazing energy corridor out where IPA is. I mean, they're right on salt domes and, and we have Magnum and Mitsubishi that are coming in. We're excited about it and the possibilities that they have. We hope that they bring other groups with them, you know, industry with them so that, you know, we can grow in the right way. But one thing that Centerville 2002 did is took the eminent domain so that we have a say on what does happen out there. And I appreciate that because that was something that's key for us, you know, otherwise we, we didn't, it didn't matter what was coming in, we didn't have a say. So that definitely did help us. Also, we need to put things in the right place and we need to grow right. We need to have the place for ag and we need to keep that going the way that it is and then we need to go ahead and, and help things evolve in a way that it's good for our community so that it's not too fast of a growth. I agree. But yet it's steady and brings good jobs into our county. We actually have a company that's coming right in right now in the county that will bring eight jobs this next year and they're decent jobs. So we're excited about some of the places that we're growing and it does always come. We actually do have a plan for the county. I know it's always been there and they worked on a plan and it's in a book also that you could probably, you know, read about too because it's something that our, we have had a plan for, not just going off the top and trying to just go ahead as, as things happen and come to us. So we definitely have a plan, we have things in place, we have boards in place, they help us to make good decisions, we have a lot of people around us, they help us to move forward in the way that we need to. So I think that's all I'm gonna say about that. So as Forrest Gump would say, right?
Wizard?
So let's go ahead and give them five minutes each for concluding remarks. If you think it's necessary to give them a few minutes to respond to each other, I think that's appropriate.
Okay. This is your, this is your last chance with this audience to make your best case. So.
If you've got the pen.
All right. I don't need to.
I can go first, I'm good. So I want to say that I really, really enjoyed doing this and that's kind of crazy. I did say I enjoyed 90% of it and 10%, just the 10% I don't love. And then it went down to about 85% because it, it is hard. This is hard, putting yourself out there in front of everyone. Also, you know, I've, I have a lot of friends that I've always liked. I have always liked everyone in Millard County. I feel like I'm, you know, somebody that people can come and talk to. I don't, I feel like I'm approachable. So, and I, I want to be. That's the kind of person that I am. I love people and I love families and, and I feel like I have a lot to give. I feel like I've always tried to be honest and fair in the things that I've done and the decisions that I've done. And believe me, there have been some that have not been easy, but I feel like I've tried to understand and make the best decision that I had so that I can move forward and make my vote count the way that it needed to. One, one thing that hasn't really been addressed here, which I think is really important, that as we move forward with this new construction, you know, there was a CUP, conditional use permit put in place that was very good for the county. Four minutes, am I done?
No, you have.
Okay, still have four minutes left. Wow, that's, that's a change because usually I'm out. Anyway, so I lost my train of thought, you know, where we were at, so.
CUP.
Yes, the CUP, thank you. One issue that we have with the CUP, I was really happy that I could get this in, but I, like I said, I'm over tourism, tourism runs on its own budget. And it is from hotel tax and restaurant tax and that's how that fund runs. That's where the money comes from. After 30 days, if you rent a roof for 30 days, you don't get that tax any longer. So we addressed that in the CUP with IPPA, Los Angeles Water and Power, so that they would pay that, you know, that impact fee that they have and plus others, housing and all the good things that we needed to have in this county, we can address it going forward because we have a good CUP put in place. Another thing that I wanted to talk about really fast, three minutes, hey, is the class B roads. I know that that barn has been an issue. I want you to know that I approved a barn over there. I could see that we needed it. I had approved it, I approved the walls going up, they were a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It didn't seem like a problem for me when I, the walls went up. I realized that it was bigger than I thought it was going to be. So we put a pause on the farm and I asked Attorney Philison to do a legal analysis, which he did. His finding was that it was a miscalculation, not misconduct. So we actually went, had a process going forward so that we could have better communication with the commission. And it's taken us the two years to get to that point, but the building is still not completed, but it's getting close. Anyway, the class B road funds come from fuel tax. It is not your property tax. And I just wanted to make that clear because they have never gone over budget in the property, in the road tax, the class B road. So I just want you to know that, that, you know, we try to make things work the way that we should and we always face problems, we know that. So one minute, hey. I appreciate being here and I appreciate all of you coming tonight because you're good people and I know that every one of your good people here is. And I hope to continue on in this job.
I've always liked everyone, I consider her friend before this and I will consider her friend after, win or lose, she's still my friend.
She always said.
She does a great job with her travel agency. I know my brother and my sister, my sister-in-law travel with her and she does a great job. So thank you guys, I ever need a travel agent. She also actually arranges the travel for the power plant and I know that she's appreciated there. Anyway, since she, well, I'll get to my other step first in case I run out of time. I know that sometimes people are saying, well, you know, we need to not have another job if you want to be a county commissioner because you can't do a good job. I believe that it's totally false. Two of our best county commissioners we recently have, Jim Luthers, Darren Smith, they were farmers. Farmers work a lot more hours than I work and they did an awesome job. So it's not how much time you have, it's what you do at the time. I only sleep four or five hours a night, so I have a lot of time that I can do the things that need to happen. I can do my research. As I mentioned before, I can drink while I'm at work, I can even make calls and receive calls and just make up that time, some other time. I can work the days I need to. I have a lot of vacation and personal time I can take off. I have comp time I can use. So I have time I can use to do this job the right way. I love challenges, I love learning and I'll give it my all. Everything I ever have done, I have given it my all. You can ask my students how hard I worked and what type of teacher I was and that would help you know what type of county commissioner I would be. I have a background in lots of different areas, which I feel gives me an advantage to understand the different situations that might arise in the county. I know that if there were somebody in the county commission that actually understood what was going on out at IPA, we probably wouldn't have gotten the mess with House Bill 393. All of that is kind of aimed at attacking IPP and it came about because I feel that the county commissioners probably didn't quite know enough information about the new gas plant and what was going to happen. There were a couple of senators from other counties that kind of thought they would try to take advantage of IPA and do their own agenda. And that's pretty much what House Bill 393 is. And I just hope that's taken care of soon. I know the state actually has given the different committees there about half a million dollars to make the studies that are totally unnecessary, but they're gonna do it anyway. And I hate to have money be wasted like that. As far as the road barn goes, I know when I do projects out of the plant, that I have to get three quotes. And I know when my husband and I build our house, we pretty much build it ourselves. We had a bunch of framing done and stuff that we wanted to just pay and go and work on it and pay for it as we went and it worked out really well. But from that experience, I learned a lot and I know before you start a building project, you have to have plans. And in this case, a road barn, but have to have engineers' stamped plans. And I don't know if that ever happened. If it didn't, that was illegal. They should have gotten three bids on building it. I don't know if that ever happened. And so there, I still have a lot of questions about what happens on that road barn if things were really done the way they are supposed to. Anyway, I am honored enough to be elected as county commissioner. I will do my homework and use my background knowledge and try to do what's best for the county because this is the best place to live. Thank you.